Good evening. I am Cynthia Elliott, President of the Rochester Board of Education. We are here tonight for a public hearing. I am joined by members of the District-wide Safety Team, the Superintendent and Superintendent Carmine Paluso. The Rochester City School District is conducting this public hearing to gather input regarding the District-wide Safety Plan, which was posted on July 17th, 2023. The Rochester City School District is committed to the safety and preparedness of its students, staff, and its visitors. Our District-wide School Safety Plan is an all-hazardous approach to crisis management and focuses on mitigation, prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery procedures. The District-wide School Safety Plan is implemented at the time of an emergency at the direction of the superintendent or his staff. Incident commanders, principal, or the principals designate, implement building emergency response Each building incident commander is authorized and directed to implement this plan or take other action as may be in his or her judgment necessary to save lives and mitigate the effects of emergencies. The District-wide Safety Plan can be found on the website And written comments may be sent via email to the Office of Safety and Security at rcsd, The 30-day public comment period is open through August 18th, 2023. All public feedback the district receives will be evaluated and considered for inclusion before the plan is finalized. We now welcome public comment on the 2023-24 District-wide Safety Plan. And I will ask District Clerk Wynn to introduce those who are signed up. But I will introduce Moses Robinson. Officer Robinson, how are you?
I'm blessed. How are you, ma'am?
Good, good. I have, I actually had asked Officer Robinson to present, to speak with us about what's going on out in the community and basically how what we are experiencing in our community, how it may have impact on what goes on in our schools. So Officer Robinson, I'm going to turn it over to you to provide us with your comments around the safety plan. Are we a target with it? Are there some other things that we need to include? Mr. Robinson, please.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Moses Robinson. I'm with the Rochester Police Department and the Community Liaison Officer with the Rochester Police Department. And of course, I'm at one great time in my life and best experience I've ever had as a law enforcement officer was the School Resource Officer at East High School for 17 years and the School Resource Officer for three years at the early college on Genesee Street. What I think about this, this, this safety plan, and I've read it in two, two different versions of it, and actually finished in the second version, is I think that what's important, and this speaks loudly in the, in the, in the, in the District Safety Plan, is that, you know, in the beginning paragraphs of the introduction of the, or overview, let's say, of the Safety Plan, there's, there's something that's mentioned here that I think is absolutely critical for all of us to understand. That gloss over is, you know, the District Safety Plan is, is an approach to crisis management. And the focus is on mitigation, prevention, and the key word here is preparedness, as well as response and recovery procedures. I think those are the kinds of things that are absolutely critical of the plan. What I want to explain in terms of tying this into our current situation with the, within the community, is that, you know, with this preparation, we are using our liaison workers, our community collaborations, both law enforcement and with, you know, our, our community experts, so to speak, that, you know, we can utilize their strength of information, what we always say in the Police Department, communication, coordination, cooperation, to, to, to find out what are the current trends, current culture, and even the culture of safety or climate of safety within the community that needs to be strategically implemented in our practices, our daily practices in terms of, you know, your violence prevention. There's another paragraph, and I believe it's also in the overview, where it talks about coordination with law enforcement, fire officials, emergency officials, and the planning, you know, conducting drills and training exercises to ensure a comprehensive and unified approach to safety and emergency planning. Again, those kinds of things are strategically important. But I think in reference to that, this causes us to reestablish certain partnerships and relationships with, you know, our law enforcement partners and our emergency response teams that in the event something does happen, we, we are going to respond appropriately and collectively, or collaboratively, to meet the needs of our school district, community-wide. And lastly, there's a paragraph four, I'm sorry, page four, paragraph two. It stipulates, or states in that paragraph something I think is extremely important, where it says it's vital to develop and train, exercise, and maintain relationships in terms of to ensure that an effective response before, during, and after an incident is strategically important. So having said that, you know, it's all written there, and I think it's beautifully written. And I think the next gather collaboratively to get the right people, from law enforcement and other people in the community, involved in furthering this development of this plan. I always say that what happens in the community finds its way to the street, finds its way to the school, and vice versa, which signals the need for us to continue to work to be better as a community to, you know, to avert any type of violence that can enter into our schools. Recently, you know, you know, for the most part, the entire summer, we've been hearing these things about, you know, certain groups, Kia boys, Kia girls, and different, different groups of kids that have displayed aggressive behavior. And I, and I don't want to insult anyone's intelligence, you know, because you guys, you know, from a school district perspective, are definitely reacting to a lot of the things that are taking place in terms of stolen vehicles being driven on the school grounds and campuses and things of that nature. And just by the grace of God, we, we're lucky to say that, and blessed to say that none of our children have been injured, nor our staff have been injured as a result of things that I just mentioned that find its way in onto the school campus from, from the community. But we need to, of course, to be ahead of these things in our response to having a whole community intervention and prevention practice or policy or relationship when it comes to these, 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 these issues. We realize that the act of violence seems to be increasing. We recognize the fact that some of our, our, our young people who recently have been killed are kids who are school-aged kids. And when we say school-aged kids, I want to make this very clear. When we say school-aged kids, we know that most of the time, and not most of the time, that kids who are between the ages of, you know, when they start in preschool, and I generally like to say ages of nine to 20, 21 years of age, have, have the opportunity to get an education and to be on the school campus. And so with that, oftentimes, you know, when we even see kids were shot or killed, you know, and they're between those ages, you must remember they're, they're still school-aged kids according to, you know, the definition. So I think that when, as, as it seems that these issues in the community are still ratcheting up, there's still issues and beefs that are going on, the chance encounters of these children, or these babies, or these students meeting in the school setting becomes more social emotional in terms of how they handle these issues. And you can actually see this playing out in the streets of Rochester right now. And I do say it's very sad. I think we have, still have an opportunity to get ahead of some of these issues when we use the proper measures, like, you know, behavior threat assessments or threat assessments, whether the warning signs of that potential violence could find its way into a school. But I also do believe that with a, that through a multidisciplinary approach, utilizing law enforcement, and, and, and then, and I say that in the sense where I'm not talking about arrest, I'm not talking about, you know, the school to prison pipeline, but I'm talking about, you know, professional law enforcement officers who have the ability to interact with the community, who are trusted in the community, that the, the, the volume of their, their conversation and what they bring to the table actually helps us to avert any potential violence and creates crisis management where we can address it appropriately as a multidisciplinary team. As I said, we realize that we're heading into a new school year. And with a unified approach to violence prevention collaboratively, I think we can really decrease a lot of, some of the things that could be potentially violence towards our, our, our school campus and our teachers and the students. And one of the things I always say is that the school climate, if the school climate is safe, then it creates a culture for the school, a school that the school is safe, and that the teachers are able to teach because they feel that there's, it's the environment in the school, the climate of the school, the reputation of the school is a school built around that safety. And so for me, looking at our current situation, including what happened last week, I think we have, we're responding to levels of violence appropriately. But I do think that we can, we can do better. I do think that our, our, our schools, you know, with the proper safety plans and requirements and, and, and space, we can actually be better. And, and that may sound like a lot of fluff, but that's who I am. I always believe that we have an opportunity to do better. It's easy to criticize what people are not doing. My question is, with all due respect, you know, what are we all doing together to make the school safe, to have our, our teachers be able to teach, but also our students safe and our families that visit our campus and sit safe as well? And I think right now, addressing that issue is going to be, it's going to be challenging. I think there's a lot of fear out in the community, especially what happened last week, and the ages of those students or people, or those kids, or those babies who were injured or shot and killed as a result of violence. But I do welcome the opportunity to, to make all of our campuses safe, to make our, our children, you know, less traumatized by violence, by us all working together to create a, a, a management, a crisis management approach that addresses the systemic needs of our parents and our children and, and our school staff so that we can create a climate in the school that's conducive to the learning. But I think that's going to be a challenge. But as I said before, I think there's a lot of good stuff in this safety plan that can be implemented with the right team at the table to, to communicate, to coordinate, and to cooperate with each other to build a safer school. But again, if we're talking about safer school, we have to also talk about a whole community approach, which creates a safer community as well.
Officer Robinson, I thank you so very much. And let me just, you know, just thank you. And you are highly respected in this community. You're a police officer and have tremendous respect from the community. And so I think that what you have to say is significant for our community and will help us to do a better job here in the district. And hopefully that can translate into our community. And, and if we get our community together, it'll translate into our district. So thank you so very much, and I will be seeing you in the near future. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. And I pray that you all stay safe and that God helps us to, you know, to make our community a better place for us all. You know, safety is important. Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here.
Thank you so much. I now welcome, I now welcome Chief Operations, Chief of Operations Jacob Scott to provide final statements regarding the safety plan process.
One, two? Thank you, President Elliott. I also want to just thank Officer Robinson as well, along with our parents and community members for reviewing our District-wide Safety School Plan and offering comments. This 30-day public has an opportunity to provide input on this plan. All comments will be evaluated and considered for inclusion in the plan. If a response is appropriate, we will include questions and answers along with the plan in the document on our website. In compliance with Educational Law Section 2801 and Commissioner's Regulation Section 155.17, the District-wide Safety Team is a cross-functional team of stakeholders with many years of experience, sharing their insights to ensure that the R C S D has a comprehensive approach to respond to acts of violence and other threats in our district. While this District-wide Safety Plan documents the comprehensive R C S D approach, building-level emergency response plans are developed at each school with the school community to identify a more individualized plan to account for differences in each building. This is another opportunity for parent input on building-level safety efforts. Key activities that are performed to ensure the safety of our district include: coordinating communication between school staff, law enforcement, and other first responders; coordinating the District-wide School Safety Plan with each building-level emergency response plan; ensuring staff understanding of the District-wide School Safety Plan; ensuring the completion and yearly update of a building-level emergency response plan for each school building; selecting and implementing security-related technology and development of standard procedures for the use of security technology; coordinating appropriate annual safety, security, and emergency training for district and school staff; ensuring that required evacuation and lockdown drills in all district buildings are required by Educational Law Section 807; and also ensuring the completion, update, and posting of all building-level emergency response plans by the dates designated by the Commissioner. We look forward to receiving any final written comments as we finalize our District-wide Plan. Thank you.
And as a reminder, the District-wide Safety Plan can be found on the website at www.rcsdk12.org/safetyplan. And public comments is invited through August 18th. There being no further business, the time now is about 5:30, and the hearing is now adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I am Commissioner Camille Simmons. And welcome to our first Equity and Student Achievement Committee of the Whole for the 2023 Still somewhat on summer break, but we are actually already back. I don't even know if many of us had a break, and that is okay. So welcome. This is going to be our first meeting. And what I want to do is kind of set the stage and start off with how we're going to be approaching equity and student achievement this particular year. We're not changing anything major, but I do want to emphasize that we will be focused on student outcomes. I want to validate the term "student," and that is inclusive of every single student in our district. That is inclusive. So all students, we want to make sure that the agendas that we bring forward this year are student-focused agendas, and that they're focused on more so student outcomes. And this will be in alignment with the board goals that we are looking to establish as we become smarter around establishing those smart goals. Some of the areas that you will see, and that I hope translate as we move forward, will be our emphasis on the instructional core, looking at strategies focused on building student academic life skills and decision-making abilities and preparedness for ages or grades K through 12. We want to ensure that these strategies are focused on teacher pedagogy and practices that impact students in the classroom. And we also want to make sure that we are looking at our content, ensuring that it is quality. That means instructional as well as our field outings, exposure opportunities for students. All of those things need to be quality. Foundational academic skills that prepare our students K through eight. We want to make sure that those things are done to ensure our students thrive in core instructional areas, literacy, math, science, and social studies. If students do not have those foundational skills in place at those key levels of, of academia, they are not going to be prepared to move into more quality opportunities around CTE, college preparedness, high school graduation, advanced placement courses. We want to see our students take advantage of all of these things. And so we need to make sure that the foundational pieces are in fact set first. I'm hoping that it will translate as well as we move forward, that our agendas are action-oriented, that we are talking about, when you see our presentations, what the problem is, why the problem exists, how we plan to monitor our performance progress and effectiveness as we work on those problems, and how we plan to achieve and measure our overall, overall outcomes for students. And as you all know, I'm very much focused on literacy, and I'm very excited to see how the social promotion policy will come into play this year. Again, students need to be fostered at the foundational levels. So looking at the primary years of K through two in literacy, the secondary years will take care of themselves. But we have to have strategies as well to, to serve those gaps that have not been addressed. And lastly, some folks may argue that literacy and these achievement gaps exist across the nation and, and several districts. And that, actually, that argument is very much true. There are many factors that have impacted students across our nation. But I want us not to be confused by how education impacts students of color as well, which is the primary student in this particular school district. And there are distinct disadvantages that happen with our children when they are not provided a quality education. So I want to just kind of keep those disparities in mind. And I hope that I articulated a little bit about what I'm looking for for our committee this year for Equity and Student Achievement as we open this year. The other update I want to provide is the fact that we do have a parent rep that has joined us. I'm very excited. She is not able to be here this evening. We'll continue to work out this schedule to ensure she's able to be here. But our new parent rep for this committee will be Monica Graham. Rochester City School District student or scholar that attends School of the Arts High School. She currently holds a parent leadership position with our PlAC Parent Committee, the Parent Leadership Advisory Council. Am I, did I get that acronym proper? Okay. And she's also a member of the SODA School-Based Planning Team. Some of her passions include advocating for social justice, equity, access, and quality education for the scholars of our community, which falls right in line with the work of this committee, the ESA Committee. She has a wealth of knowledge and experience, and we are excited to have her joining our team. So we'll take a moment to welcome Monica Graham. And again, as she's able to physically be here, I'll be really happy to extend an opportunity for her to speak on her own behalf. With that, I'm going to just try to open up this My computer keeps doing its own thing here. There we go. Okay. So my understanding is we do not have any speakers for this evening. Okay. And I'd like to entertain a motion to review and accept the minutes from the June 13th ESA meeting. Moved by President Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Malloy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to turn our time over to the teaching and learning updates, instruction and I-ready assessments. We're going to have Mr. Steve Lamorte speak with us. Thank you.
Better now, yes? Good evening, everyone. President Elliott, Board of Education Commissioners, Superintendent Mr. Alaseya, District colleagues, and audience watching at home. Thanks very much for giving me some time tonight to talk a little bit about teaching and learning. And more specifically, we're talking about assessment data today. We're talking about I-Ready, which is an assessment we give, oh, back up. Assessment we give to all students, or generally speaking, kindergarten through eighth grade here in the district. Always kind of taking a look, as Commissioner Simmons was talking about, really starting always everything with the instructional core. I've talked about it a little bit before. Dr. Jallow has kind of addressed folks as well. Anytime we want to talk about what's happening in a classroom, we always need to recognize this instructional core, the relationship between students, educators, and the content that they are learning or to be taught. And all decisions that we make really have to revolve around how this impacts the instructional core. So today, us talking about assessment data. And while assessment is not necessarily a thing named in this diagram, assessment is an essential part of this relationship and how we can kind of get a feel for how this relationship is going, right? In the instructional core, is it working? Is it not? And as the name implies, right, assess what to do next. So when we talk about assessment, I think for the most part, immediately people just assume the word "assessment" means "test," right? And that's especially kind of how our culture has been for a while. As soon as you hear "assessment," we hear about test, test anxiety, high-stakes tests. And so grounding us for a second, just around the purpose of assessment, is talking about the different reasons or the different kinds of assessments, really. Looking on one side, to the right slide, you'd see summative assessments. So this is the test, right, that we stereotip, stereotypically, excuse me, think about. The New York State 381 ELA and Math Assessments, Regents Exams, those are summative assessments, right? They happen at the end of learning to assess. They happen at the end of learning to assess, right, whether or not a student has gotten the skills or the content that that test is designed for. It's not just standardized tests. It could be the, you know, the teacher-made tests, right? That quiz on the Industrial Revolution, right? That's a summative test at the end of learning. We look to the opposite side of the spectrum. On the left side of the slide, we see formative assessments. And as that name implies, formative assessments are designed to help form and shape and guide instruction. So, formative assessments are happening all day, every day, in all classrooms, right? That's not something that somebody at Central Office or in New York State pushes down into classrooms. That's what teachers do naturally all day long, both part of what they plan in terms of their lessons. It could be an easy fist-to-five, right, on whether or not you understand it. It could just be checking for understanding in terms of questions or tickets out the door, right? The formative assessments are the things happening all the time to help teachers make the decisions they need about what students need to learn. In the middle, we have this thing called interim assessments, which is kind of a blend of both, right? So, whereas summative assessments, there's fewer of them, right? Like, you only have that one Regents exam, that one New York State assessment. And formative assessments are happening all day, every day, in all classes. Interim assessments are kind of this bridge in the middle, and that's what we're talking about when we talk about I-Ready, right? So, I-Ready is an interim assessment. We give it three times a year, and I like to think of I-Ready as a yardstick, hence my prop that I brought with me today, right? I wasn't expecting trouble. I just wanted to give this as an example, right, of what we think about, what we should think about when we think about I-Ready, right? So, I-Ready is a test that is given three times a year, and the power in I-Ready is that in thinking about it as a yardstick, it starts in kindergarten down at the bottom, and in our case, eighth grade at the top. So, every time a student takes it, we can see where they land on this spectrum of kindergarten through eighth grade, right? So, it's not a teacher-made test that is to measure something different. It's not just the one-time thing, but every time the students take it, they get a marker, a place on this yardstick. So, where the power is in I-Ready is it's about growth, right? Because if you take it two, three times a year, and then year over year over year in first grade, second grade, third grade, we get a lot of marks on this stick, and we get to see how kids are growing, how fast they're growing, and what they're growing at or not growing at, right? So, if we look at our data in particular, I'm going to show you about three slides, I think, for math and three slides for ELA, and then we can talk a little bit about the kinds of things we're doing to respond, and then, of course, questions as we go. Some of the slides are pretty packed, so I want to take just a quick second to orient you to this one, and how we talk about this slide is going to be applicable, right, to all the other slides. So, you're looking at a slide right now with two bar graphs. You see a bunch of different colors: red, yellow, and green. And I know you guys have seen this before, so I can say it kind of quickly. Dark red represents a student who scored at three grade levels or below whatever grade that they are in at that moment in time. Light red, two grade levels below, yellow, one grade level below, and then the greens are early on grade level or mid or above grade level. So, what this slide shows you, if you take a look at the top left, you'll see these slides are about math. And if you take a look at the bottom right, this shows all students that tested K8, and it shows their performance in the fall of 2223 versus their performance in spring of 2223. So, this is the beginning of last school year, September, to the end of last school year in June. And so, what you'll see is that in the beginning of the school year, we had about 3% of kids in the green in math, and at the end of the school year, we had about 20% of kids in green at the math. So, that's an increase of about 17%. The next slide would break that down by grade level. If you're looking on the screen, it's probably really small to see, but I know you guys have got copies on your own to be able to inspect. And rather than spending time looking at each individual grade level, just wanted to pop it all up here for you to kind of see the pattern, right? And you'll see a lot more green in the early grades than you do in the later grades, right? So, you'll find that when we get to ELA, the same pattern is true. So, we have kids, or students are increasing at higher rates in the lower grade levels than they are when you get all the way up to seventh and eighth grade, you see very small amounts of increases over a whole year. The final in the trio of slides looks like the very first slide, but it's a little different. The first slide that we looked at compared last September to last June, right, the same kids over a school year, and what this chart shows you is where students were at June of 2022 versus June of 2023, right? So, at the end of the 2122 school year, we see that we had 13% of students in the green, and at the end of this school year, we had 20% of students in the green at math. So, as compared to last year, we had a 7% increase in student performance in math. Same slides that you'll see now for ELA, or same format, right, but just for reading as opposed to ELA. I may have lost connection. Okay. So, like we said, same kind of format, but we're talking about reading from last, September to June, right? In September, we started with about 10% kids in the green, and at the end of the school year, 16% of our students in the green for ELA. The breakdown across grade level, slightly different numbers, but again, you'll see the same pattern, right, of kids increasing at a faster rate in kindergarten, first, second grade than in the upper grade levels in seventh and eighth. And then finally, this is the June of 2022 compared to June of 2023 data, and you'll see in June of 2022, we had about 20% of students in the green in ELA, and June of 2023, this past June, there was an increase of 6% to 26%, right? I think it's safe to say that increases are good and positive, but we know the urgency in which we are, right, those increases are not coming as fast and as hard as we want them to. So, just to talk a little bit about the things that we're planning and doing for continuous improvement and to continue to see those gains, but also increase those gains as well. In terms of literacy, we have a couple of different things aimed at the kind of teacher level to support teachers to support students, right? So, there's letters training, which I know folks are probably familiar with, if not from this committee or from the school district, just in the general population at large. LETTERS stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, essentially a professional development program about how to teach reading better. So, last year, we started on that journey with teachers. We got over about 750 teachers that have gone through some letters training already. We're continuing that this year and incorporating school administrators this year as well so they can support teachers who can help support students. We also purchased some additional resources for teachers to use, particularly aimed at foundational literacy. So, you'll see that kids were gaining quicker in K-1, 2, and slower in 7, 8. What you'll find, if you, you can dig into the I-Ready data even a little deeper to find out a little bit more about the skill level that is missing, you'll find that there are seventh and eighth graders who still have big gaps in foundational literacy skills, right? So, these resources and this training will help teachers to do that. We're also not only purchasing decodable reader sets to help support instruction, but some supplemental curriculum pieces, particularly at the early grades, to help with those foundational reading skills. In mathematics, some similar kinds of things, working on curriculum. There is an illustrative mathematics program that we started about a year ago in seventh and eighth grade, which is a very well-known program, highly effective, you know, across the nation, research-based, and so we're creeping that out in grade levels. While it's a pretty solid foundation in 7, 8, we're creeping it down towards into elementary and up into the algebra and high school levels as well, continued refinement in curriculum. And like LETTERS, you know, where it's a professional development program for teachers-to-teacher reading, there's another program called NUMBERS, go figure, right, for math. NUMBERS doesn't actually have an acronym meaning, I think they just called it NUMBERS to make it sound like LETTERS, right? So, we, instead of, you know, we're still working on teachers in ELA to get them through the LETTERS training, so we won't go whole, full into all teachers with NUMBERS at first. We're creating a cadre of in-house trainers so that way we can turnkey school by school by school, right, to increase teacher proficiency in teaching math. Thinking about kind of direct support to students and families as well, something that we've had in the past in the district, you know, we've always had coaches and intervention prevention teachers and reading teachers, and in the past, we've had some centralized training, and that's gone away over the years. So, starting next year, we'll reintroduced centralized training and roles for some of those coaches and intervention teachers, so that way there's a more standardized model of delivery to support students directly in school during the school day. I-Ready itself has some really great resources for parents and families to use at home, and so they have access to those. And there's also two services we've purchased in the district, AMIRA, which is focused, which is an online artificial intelligence-based reading tutor that families have access to 24/7, right, and the same thing with PAPER, right? So, AMIRA is aimed more at literacy for the early grades, and PAPER is a 24/7 access to online tutoring for the upper grades, right, not just reading, but any subject as well. And so, we'll also continue to assess and enhance expanded learning programs. I know one of our Office of Grants and Program Accountability and Doing Program evaluations are working on evaluating last year's expanded learning and summer school programs, so we'll have a better idea about what things we should replicate and what things maybe we need to shore up, right? Something I didn't put on the slide, but I was thinking about, you know, another thing that we had worked on in the past is we worked a lot, I think teaching and learning worked a lot more closely with our Office of Family and Community Engagement, right, to work on parent universities and really talk with parents about things they can do at home. So, we'll explore that, how best to fit back into the parent university schedule as well in the near future here in the district. With that said, end of my formal time. If you have any questions, comments, please.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I do have a couple of questions, and I'll open it up, and I'm glad to hear what you said regarding the parent university and wanting to delve in there because parents as partners is extremely important when it comes, especially to, you know, things like literacy and these, there's things that can be done at home. And I'm looking at letters and, you know, the I-Ready, and excuse me, I'm, listen, at the risk of sounding a little ignorant, I know that phonics is in here, but how heavy is phonics? Because I think back to a lot of folks in this room who learn how to read through simplistic phonics-based instruction, and, you know, sometimes we try to get so technical and strategic that we lose those things that really worked in the past, and I just want to make sure our students start to get that, because you cannot replace phonics. How heavy? Reading, letters, all this good stuff, where's the phonics? Tell me about that.
Yeah. What I was saying before about I, when you dig into I-Ready, you can kind of break it down into domains of student skill. So, phonological awareness, phonics, and vocabulary are some of those foundational skills that you can look at kind of submeasures in I-Ready, and when I said that sometimes you'll see 20% up to, right, of seventh and eighth graders that are lacking in foundational skills, that's what we're talking about.
Exactly.
So, LETTERS is aimed directly at that, right, to help teachers be better prepared to do that work with students, and the resources that we talked about, we're purchasing, we're directly aimed at that as well. So, the decodable readers is exactly what that's about, right? So, if a teacher is instructing on, right, particular letter blends, right, or sounds, right, like in terms of phonological awareness, we've now got an additional kind of set of things in their toolbox to be able to give to them. Decodable readers is what the students would then use on their own to do that practicing for a week or two to follow up on that, right? So, we're looking to both enhance teachers' ability to teach that and provide them with the resources to support that, so that way they're not making things on their own.
Awesome. So, yeah, I look forward to hearing more about how that's happening across the district and how consistent that is to ensure that students are getting equitable opportunity. And with that, I have one last question, which is around the online reading tutor that you mentioned. Will that be available across grade levels in every school, or I might have missed that?
Yep. AMIRA is available across K-5 in every school, or K-6, please don't quote me exactly, but in the elementary grades, and really because it's aimed at early reading, right? So, AMIRA wouldn't be useful for an eighth grader, or ninth grader, tenth grader, generally speaking. But yes, available to everyone, online, and the same thing with PAPER.
Wonderful.
Generally, we ask folks to not necessarily use it during the day, you know, but certainly expanded learning times, and at-home use is just totally possible for everyone.
Thank you. Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you. Great presentation, and I just have to say, it's so refreshing to see something so student outcome-focused, so kudos to our chair for bringing that up earlier. I was alarmed when I initially saw the presentation and saw that progressive decline, but also it was refreshing to see the improvement that we seem to be making, that steady improvement by grade level. Hopefully, that will continue. I don't know how much of that is based because of, it was COVID-related, you know, kids are back in school now, but hopefully that continues to go up. I think my main interest in I-Ready, because I think it's an excellent progress monitoring program. As a parent, how can I best support my own kids? I didn't know a lot about the program, I think, last year, other than, you know, just asking my children, I didn't have a lot of access to how to help them with it at home, and I didn't really know what I was looking at. So, I think any, I really do like the fact that those fridge tips that I saw in that presentation, that's great. What type of training will we offer parents? Is it solely online, or will there be in-person opportunities for them to go to a school as well and get support somehow? Because I think most parents want to see their kids successful at school and doing I-Ready, and any training we could get, any opportunity for that would be welcomed. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Part of our regular contract with I-Ready was professional development, mostly focused towards adult, teachers, right, staff. We've kind of mixed and matched a little bit of our existing contract for next year so that way we will have almost a full-time person from I-Ready that will be with us, kind of like an added staff member, to both talk with teachers and staff during the day, but also do some of that work as well.
Perfect. Thank you. And would you say you feel that we have a capacity around staffing to help with this instruction as students, the number of students that need additional math, reading, science instruction, do we have the capacity to provide the additional instructional supports? We used to have reading teachers, things like that. Where are we with being able to execute?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't think I have a full answer for you right now, simply because I'm not always sure we have a full picture of what all, of the staffing needs that we have and what all of our folks are doing during the day. So, one thing we're doing with, like I said, with centralized training of intervention and prevention teachers next year, because that's what an intervention-prevention teacher's job is all day, right? They don't have a regular, a regular full-time class, right? They're there to provide interventions. But we haven't necessarily been linking those teachers to students in power school, right? Like, you know, as Mr. Lamorte would have a class of 28 kids, the intervention-prevention teacher wasn't necessarily there. So, we're looking to shore up some of our internal practices to start tracking, right, like who's working with who at what points in time, and then we'll start to see what that level of effectiveness is, and we'll start to get a better idea of the load of the, yeah, one person is great, or nope, we need four.
Yeah, no, that's wonderful. So, we'll put that in the question log and then look forward to some follow-up around timeline and what that looks like, and I know that that requires some planning to figure that out.
Absolutely.
I want to make sure I don't miss anyone. I can't see everyone like I do on the dais. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Yes, sir? Mr. Adams? Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, I was glad to hear that, like, over 700 teachers took part in, were humble enough to take part in training to help support the students with reading. I really was glad to hear that. But in your presentation, I really was concerned about, I seen the movement in the green, but it still was a whole lot of red up there, and that's, I don't know, we got to do a power pack or something? We got to, I just would like to hope that we have plans to change that red a little more. I know everything takes time and all of that, but to me, it still was way too much red. And so, I'm just hoping that we can progress in that area.
Yes, sir. Yeah, agreed, understood and agreed.
I think it's on. Can you hear me? Okay. So, if there are no other questions, we appreciate your presentation tonight, and just know that we'll be leaning in on some literacy as we move forward. Thank you. Okay. And so, we have the district's special education plan that is going to come forward at this particular time.
Nice to see you. I think I've met all of the commissioners. I'm Kristin Swan, Chief of Special Education. Thank you for having me tonight.
So, we are in a different edifice this evening, those of you are viewing audience, so we're having a little bit of technical difficulties. having a little bit of technical difficulties, and we're waiting for the presentation to come up. We appreciate your patience.
I just want to make sure, take this opportunity while we're getting ready, to announce that on August 24th before the board business meeting, we are, we will be holding a community forum for a potential name change for School 16. And if people could sign up to speak, they can email publicforum@rcsdk12.org. So just want to take this opportunity to remind people that August 24th prior to the board meeting, we'll have a community forum on a possible name change for John Walton Spencer School Number 16. And you could sign up to speak at publicforum@rcsdk12.org.
Thank you, Superintendent Paluso. And they can start that process of signing up starting this evening, as early as this evening. Okay, thank you. Chief Swan, when you're ready.
So I am presenting tonight on our special education plan. Each school district in the state needs to have a special education plan that's available to our community, that helps the community understand our special education programming, our continuum of services, how we evaluate our program, and the policies and procedures that we have around special education. So I want to talk a little bit about our special education supports and services first. The community may hear about those special education supports and services through the term "our continuum of service." And really what that means is the range of supports and services that we offer students that can include general, students in the general education setting, receiving accommodations and support services, all the way to very restrictive placements, like a residential placement if a student is really struggling in his or her home. And so our school district offers the full continuum of services to meet the needs of our students with disabilities. Our community and our Board of Education have been very purposeful and mindful and committed to what we term placing students in the least restricted environment. And we create those educational supports and services, and we identify that through the student's individualized education program. So at least annually, we evaluate what students need, we evaluate their progress, and we determine what they're going to need in order to be successful in the next school year. The district has also made a commitment to really look at this continuum of service, and how do we provide ample supports and services near what we would consider the student's home school? So we think about where would the student be attending school if they did not have a disability? And how do we ensure that supports and services are as close to the student's home school as possible, so they don't necessarily always have to make school changes? And then, of course, for those students who require it, we also offer extended school year services. Those are summer services for students who have the potential for showing or having substantial regression if they didn't continue to attend school during the summer. So I'm going to review some of our special education data. The Office of the Special Education Department looks at what we call a snapshot of where our students are in our data every year, and that snapshot is taken on BEDS Day. BEDS stands for Basic Educational Data System. And basically, that's a day, usually the first Wednesday in October, where we take a snapshot of all of our students with special needs, and we look to see how are they classified, where are they placed, what are the supports and services? We use that BEDS Day in October because the state feels that by that time in October, we've had a chance to start school, students have moved in, and hopefully we have somewhat of a stable enrollment by that time. So the data that I'm going to be reviewing is on that snapshot day. So we look at our classification rate. In our school district, over the past few years, our classification rate has really ranged between that 18 and a half to 20, close to 21%, excuse me, this school year. You might be wondering, well, maybe why that increase? I think that that's an increase that we are seeing not only in our district, but across the region, and certainly indicates the impact, quite honestly, of the pandemic. We've got students coming in who may have not received any preschool services, struggled during the pandemic, and now that we are fully returned, really starting to address those needs and see an increase in classification. We also look at that BEDS data, and we look to see what our district average is, and then the averages of students with disabilities placed at each of our buildings. This graph represents the elementary buildings, and you'll see that we have some students or some buildings that have a higher classification rate, and that's because we have certain specialized programs in certain buildings. So for example, we have programs that specifically meet the language and the social language and behavioral needs of students with autism. We have specialized transition programs, self-contained classes in particular buildings. This is a representation of our secondary buildings as well. So again, looking at the district average in relationship to the percent of students attending each of our secondary buildings. I will share with you that internally, in our department, we're looking at this data very carefully, and again, that continuum of service, and asking ourselves, how could we make sure that there's a more equitable distribution of students with disabilities within all of our buildings? We also look at our five-year data and where our students with disabilities are placed by location type. You can see that our in-district students with disabilities are, our number has actually decreased, but we also look very closely at how many students we're placing in outside agencies, as well as the amount of students with disabilities who have chosen to enroll in charter or non-public schools. We are responsible for services in those settings. We are happy to see that agency settings are decreasing, but we have a careful eye on charter schools and non-public schools. So I talked a little bit about the district's commitment to the least restricted environment. And again, we ask ourselves, where would students be educated if they were not disabled? And that we are committed to making sure that students with disabilities are in the general education as much as possible with their non-disabled peers. This is actually a data point that we look at closely, both from a state education department, but also our special education decree. What we want to do is we want to see our students educated 80% or more in the general education setting. So over the last five years, this data is moving in the right direction. We want to see more students in the general education setting. Our goal is at least to have 65% of students in the general education setting, 80% or more. So we're getting close to that goal, and certainly our efforts are moving in the right In addition, we look very closely to see how many students are educated less than 40% in a general education setting. And again, our goal, both from state ed and our special education decree, was at 17%. So we've met this goal this year. And again, working really hard to make sure that the appropriate supports and services are in place in the general education setting, so students can be successful. We evaluate our special education data nonstop. We have three main ways in which we are constantly evaluating our classification rates, how students are achieving, how they're meeting their goals and objectives. One, we have a very close partnership with the Regional Partnership Center, and those are our state education department colleagues. They support our department in adhering to timelines and compliance issues. We're working together to monitor our suspension rates, reducing specialized transportation, again, the degree in which students are educated in the least restricted environment. So we meet with our regional partners every week, and we also, because we are a targeted school district, have a compliance plan that we work with our regional associates on. As the board knows, we also have our special education consent decree, that we evaluate our progress towards our goals on that decree at least quarterly. I can share with you internally, those measurements are looked upon weekly. We really study how we're doing and meeting and working towards those markers. And then finally, we work with our regional associates on any type of corrective action plans that we might have, and to make sure that we are in compliance to the greatest extent possible in all of our special education work. I do want to share some celebrations as we monitor our work and some of the progress that was made this year as it pertains to the consent decree. We really looked carefully, and the department worked hard, to make sure that changes of schools were really being reduced. Again, we're trying to create a continuum that minimizes the amount of times that students might have to leave their home school to seek support someplace else. We also worked very hard to increase the amount of transition teams in our buildings. Those transition teams focus on providing supports and services to students and really helping them to prepare and meet with success their goals after they graduate and leave us. That work starts early. It starts as early as elementary and middle school, really helping students to identify their strengths, their goal areas, and how they're going to accomplish that. We're also celebrating compliance work that we've really focused on, particularly holding meetings at the appropriate time, making sure that parents are involved in our committee meetings, and making sure that we are meeting all of those regulatory timelines that we are mandated to meet. We also have been working with providers to make sure that they are logging all of their mandated support and services in our frontline system. That's not only very important for them to be logging, so we've got that data, and we can reflect on it and see how students are doing, but it allows us to really be proactive in identifying the supports and services that students need over time. And again, we continue to look at our special programs, how students are thriving and achieving, such as our bilingual programs, and we are looking at our classification rate and placement. We continue to focus on challenges such as improving student achievement. We mentioned even this evening, and I will talk a little bit more about it, specific attention on our literacy rates for students with disabilities, looking at our graduation rates, suspension in least restricted environment. Our focus areas, particularly that we're working with the state education department, are in a few of our areas: behavior, transition, performance, and disproportionality. So I'd like just to take a moment to talk a little bit about those areas. In the area of behavior, we've been working this year, and will continue this up-and-coming school year, on working with building-level data teams, really reviewing in a very consistent way behavioral data that helps us make recommendations in the classroom to really meet students' behavioral needs, their social, emotional needs. The intent behind this focus area is to really reduce suspensions. We know that when students with disabilities are suspended, they're missing significant and important instructional time. So our intent is to really understand their behaviors, accommodate them, meet their needs, and avoid suspension. Again, we'll continue to focus on transition planning, so making sure that we've got building-based transition teams in our buildings, working as early as elementary and middle school, and starting to develop appropriate transition plans for students once they graduate and leave us. Looking at performance of literacy, we have a particular program that we piloted this year, Great Reading for All. We piloted it in seven buildings, saw tremendous success with that program. That program would be considered a Tier III support, one of the most significant specialized individualized reading programs. Because we met with such success in the seven schools that we piloted, we're actually training across the elementaries and are opening that up as a Level III program of support at the elementary level. This is an area that our regional associates and our regional partnership with the state will be helping us implement and train on in one of our targeted areas. And then finally, we're looking, this is a new area this year, at disproportionality. When we look at our classification data, we also recognized this year that we had a disproportionate amount of white students being recommended for out-of-district placements, fairly significant segregated settings, such as Norman Howard, Hillside, Mary Carriola. So we'll be looking carefully at that classification information, trying to understand that and determine what supports and services we could build in the district to support I did want to touch upon the graduation rate for students with disabilities. You can see the five-year data trend continuing to go up. Again, that's a point of celebration. Our baseline data in 2017 started at 36%, but again, this is an area of focus and commitment that we have. Many more students with disabilities should be graduating from our school district, so that will continue to be an area of focus. I'm wondering if there are any questions that I might answer?
Thank you, Chief Swan. I'm gonna jump in right here, and then I'll open up for, matter of fact, I'm gonna go the other route. I'm gonna allow for other commissioners to weigh in, and then I'll have a few questions for you. I think I saw your hand, Commissioner Malloy.
So this is a more general question. Thank you so much for your presentation. Very enlightening. As I looked through just the equity issues in some of those early slides, you know, some of our schools have almost 40% of our students, and that could be because, could be because of the specialized programming at those particular schools. But some of the schools that have really high levels of students with disabilities don't have that type of specialized programming. And so I'm, I would love to take a deeper dive into why we see such disparity or discrepancy between our schools. So we have some schools at close to the 40% rate that don't seem to have a lot of those specialized programs, and then, you know, one of our schools has only a 7% rate. I just, I worry about equity. You know, obviously, obviously you do as well. You know, obviously, obviously you do as well. One concern I have is as we consider the reconfiguration in the district, and this might be more for our superintendent than for you, Ms. Swan, what impact is our reconfiguring or restructuring going to have on our ability to ensure that students' needs and services are met regardless of location? And this can be a question, log question, but...
No, it's a very good question. I think I'm gonna just give an overview answer of it right now. Is historically, we place classes for our students with disabilities after the fact, right? You know, and so everyone's placed, and then we say, what school has room? What school has space? And that's where new classes, new programs, and in particular our special classes, like twelve-on-ones, end up. We need to do a more deliberate role of placing our special education continuum first across the district and then overlay, right? And so we've made already a small step in that this year where we held seats back so that schools can't completely fill, and then we are not able to add students with disabilities to those schools, right? You know, so we're making conscious decisions right now to do that. But as we plan reconfiguration, whatever we're, how we're configured, we have to really keep in mind laying our continuum down first and then placing all the classes around it after the fact, not doing that after we place all students.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. And then the final question I had was just regarding the beds data. So you mentioned that's a snapshot of our students in October, but we know our student populations change building by building throughout the school year. And what we see in October is gonna be very different sometimes than what we see in May in particular buildings, especially as we get back students, particularly our students with disabilities from charter schools. And so I guess what I'm wondering is what impact or... Sorry, I have my question here. Do you see an increase then? Is that in those numbers? And what do we do to address that in terms of equity?
So we do see an increase, absolutely. And I think it's what Superintendent Paluso was just referring to. So that's a snapshot. That's what our accountability data is based on. But internally, we're updating that information on a weekly basis. So we're trying to be proactive and preparing for that type of increase and making sure that we have seats available. We do a lot of internal conversations, particularly for children who are transitioning, so preschool students that we know are coming in, what type of supports and services. That's how you build your continuum of service. What that'll look like and what it is even looking like this year is as we are placing students for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we're starting to have continuum placement conversations for twenty-four, twenty-five, already starting to project the programs and the supports and services that we need for another year out. And that's how you've got to constantly be looking at that data and refreshing that data to create that continuum of service.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
I'd just like to say you did an excellent presentation. What stood out for me and a lot of other family members out here in this community is you spoke about suspensions and you spoke about disproportionality. Nobody ever went there before. I didn't hear them, if they did. And you talked about how the white students are being basically prioritized in those areas. And I'm just so very happy to hear that conversation even on the table. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Powell?
Thank you. This is a follow-up question on that same slide of the elementary percentage of special ed classes, students enrollment. So I can understand how a small school, having even one section more than one might expect, would tip the scales, like School Twenty-three has a well-above-average. But it's a small school, so a single section can make that much difference. So I thought, well, what if I just pick out our three biggest elementary schools, Forty-five, Thirty-three, and Twelve? And the disparity amongst those three large elementary schools, they're at three entirely different places on the chart. Can you give a little insight why that might be?
Yeah, another good question, right? We're looking at isolated student with disability data, right? You know, some of the programs, like at Twelve and Thirty-three, also have bilingual programming, right? You know, so when we're making some of those decisions, right, there are places where we may place student with disability classes, but we may not also want to add student with disabilities and bilingual programming in the same building. So at Twelve and Thirty-three both have bilingual programming where School Forty-five doesn't, and a School Forty-five also has a specialized programming as well with some of our ASD classrooms.
And to the extent that the far right of the chart has very low numbers, most of those are pretty small schools as well? Is that simply a function of having space for, like, where one section would throw the numbers off significantly?
Yes, yes. And if you look at the bottom, you're taking the last few, for example, right? Twelve, Seventeen, Fifty-four, Nine, and Thirty-five. Out of those five, four of them are bilingual programming, right? You know, so we may want to kind of stay away from that. Twenty-two, Oh-two, School Two has a specialized program as well. So there are parameters, factors involved in it as well. It also comes down to sometimes space in a building, right? If we have a three-strand building and you're keeping it a three-strand building, is there beyond a ICT class? Is there going to be space for a special classroom for a special class, right? You hit it right on the head with Twenty-three. You could do the same thing with Forty-six, two-strand buildings. You add ICT into that class, into that building. They already have a twenty-five percent classification rate because half of one section is for ICT students. So that becomes twenty-five percent of the students. And all programs really aren't also created equal in terms of how they're distributed and what the needs are.
And last question on the next slide. The high schools are identified by their school number, and that's, that needs translation because there's not a ready source for school number compared to what we commonly refer to as school name?
So that, if you look on what is on screen, we did add the names after the fact, but we will, the updated presentation with school names will be added.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that out, Commissioner Powell, because I was going, that was one of the first pieces I wanted to bring out is that if what I'm looking at is what the public's looking at, then they don't have the names. So knowing that it's gonna be updated. Okay, perfect, thank you. Commissioner? Okay, thank you. So that takes care of my next question, which was on Slide Nine. I'm gonna move forward on to Slide Eleven real quick. And I think we had some robust conversation around the concentrated spaces, and Superintendent Paluso's given us some additional understanding. I'm excited, more so, that's what I wanted to talk about, is looking to place students in the least restrictive environments. I think that's extremely important. We know that students exposed to higher-level grades and different opportunities can help increase their performance, so I just wanted to lift that. And then Slide Fifteen. I think there you mentioned something around, you know, the compliance meetings, meeting with parents annually and doing a better job at doing, making sure that happens. In addition to meeting with parents during that timeframe, what additional opportunities are we creating to make sure we're meeting with parents to get feedback loops on how we're doing around special education?
I know that my predecessor, Desiree Richmond, and the directors really made a commitment and have been very active with our parent group as well. I've already had the opportunity to meet with them personally. And so we are talking about how do we establish those relationships, that trust with our community? How do we invite them in to hear what they need? You know, we are working with CPAC for a special education fair in September, and part of that will be an outreach of what are parents looking for? What types of resources or questions do they have so we can meet those needs? The other opportunity that's really helped create those relationships is utilizing Zoom for these meetings. So parents who may have had a barrier to come in physically are now more actively engaging with us, and we're gonna continue that practice and to make sure that we're reaching out and establishing those relationships as much as possible.
Great, awesome. At some point, I'd love to know, like, how many we're seeing in participation and if we're getting a diverse group of parents as well. So thank you very much for that. And I think my last question will take us to Slide Number Nineteen. Commissioner Adams kind of touched on the disproportionality. I am interested to learn more about what was lifted there and the white students, as you stated, being placed in various areas because we know segregation is real. This is a segregated school district. If we're real about the conversation, right? And then when we look at students with disabilities, they are also being segregated within an already segregated school system, or at least it can appear that way. And we know there's a lot of nuances there that, as to how students are placed, but we want to make sure that we are not doing that, right? So I'd love to know when these decisions have been made. I know you said you're gonna look into that. Do those forms or documents talk about the reason why? Oftentimes, if you're displacing a student, it'll say why. Are there trends or threads that you can speak to this evening that, something?
I don't have that analysis this evening, but I would be happy to come back. So again, this is a new area that we'll be working with the state, and the preliminary work will be to do exactly what you're talking about, to really look at the data, dive deeply into it, analyze it, try to understand where those trends are and what we need to do in order to provide the supports and services here in our district as opposed to sending students out. So that's the work that'll happen this year, and I'm happy to report back to the board on progress that we're making in those areas.
That would be awesome, thank you. And then my final question is around behavior. You have behavior, transition, performance, and the disproportionality. And so when I think about student performance, we know if a student's not necessarily academically sound, sometimes that will show out in classroom behavior, things of that nature. I'd like to know more about behavior, like how much of it is student behavior? How much of it is classroom management, perception? Give me more about the student behavior and what you are seeing. Are there things that you can talk about specifically when you're referring to behaviors?
So the work this year was to really establish those behavior teams. And so how will those teams work to look at data and look at suspension data, for example, and dig down to understand what that is? So as an example, we're starting to look at suspension data through the lens of is there a pattern of behavior? If there is a pattern of behavior going into the individualized education program and looking to see what supports and services have already been identified, what might be missing, and what needs to be created to support students. So the first year was to establish these behavioral teams, get them up and running and functioning, and to know how to look at data. This year is really to extend that work and start to create supports and services for students that we're seeing those patterns on.
Thank you very much for that. I think Commissioner Malloy has one more question.
Thank you. And this is more for the board than anything else, but I'm wondering what are our outcome goals for our students with disabilities? And are they SMART goal-aligned? So it kind of makes me think as we begin our work on goal-setting and making them more student outcome-oriented. It makes me think we need to include this as one of those goals.
If I can respond to that?
Yes, President Elliott?
Particularly because we have a consent decree that needs to be one of the primary goals that we have. So I'm looking forward to conversation around that as we move forward. Thank you.
And I would say I'm particularly excited about our direction as we become more aligned with what we need to be doing as far as focusing on students. So Chief Swan, we appreciate your presentation this evening, and we'll look forward to your follow-up on some of the questions that we may need to dig into a little deeper and look forward to working with you more so this year. Thank you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We were trying to figure out the clapping. Never clap before we get over to East High School. I mean, not that it wasn't good, don't misunderstand. I'm just saying.
President Elliott said we acted brand-new.
I know.
Okay, so let me see here. It looks as if this actually concludes the Equity and Student Achievement Committee of the whole this evening. So I'm going to entertain a motion to end the meeting. President Elliott, Commissioner Adams, all in favor? Before we close, I'll make sure we take that board survey, and I appreciate you all this evening. Have a good night. Have a good night.